Is that on there? Oh God. My name is Pam Ransier and I would like to welcome you to the Pasco Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the City Council on changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, considering the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. To perform our duties, the Planning Commission holds formal public review via public hearings and workshops. The City Council then takes the testimony, facts, findings, and our recommendations we create and make the final decision on those matters. So, to begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the meeting clerk to call the role.
Tanya Bowers. Joseph Campos.
Present.
Al Mendez.
Present.
And Jordan. Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Isaac Myram. Zara Roach. Pam Ransier.
Present. We don't have a quorum though, right?
We do not. So we'll need to skip the first and only action item, which is the approval of the August 15th minutes.
Thank you. At this time, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on PSC Channel 191 on Charter Cable and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on-demand link and you will make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask you to turn off your cell phones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the Commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your name and city of address for our records. But since this is a workshop, we probably won't be doing that, right? Okay. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires that public meetings and hearings like the one being held this evening not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in a hearing or a decision in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or will be waived. First of all, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? I would like to declare that I used to work with Mr. Balu from Port of Pasco when we both worked for City of Richland. We do not work together now and have no other interactions besides what's going on at this meeting. And is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. Okay, we are not going to be approving the minutes tonight. As we stated earlier, there is not a quorum, so... We'll go on to the first item on the agenda, or the, excuse me, the next item on the agenda. Item 5A, it's a workshop item for a code amendment, Flood Plane Management Ordinance Code Update. MF... See, it's a file number, CA 2019-012.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And as you mentioned, this is a workshop item distributed on the bench tonight. Is a revised second page of the staff memorandum. The one that does not, this should not contain a motion because that was put on the original memorandum included in your packet in error. And it's hard to see the map on the screen, so we've distributed copies of the pertinent flood plane property, or the properties that are affected by the flood plane designation here in Pasco. Believe it or not, Pasco does have areas that are subject to what's called the 100-year flood. The FEMA and FIRM programs are programs that the federal government sponsors that allow property owners to purchase flood insurance within the community. So, part of the, one of the strings that goes with that program is that you must adopt an ordinance that prevents flood damage. And the last time Pasco revised their flood prevention ordinance was in 1987. So the Department of Ecology paid us a visit this past summer and brought along with them a new model ordinance. And actually, it makes only slight changes to the original 1987 ordinance, but it is necessary for the community to consider the revisions contained in the model ordinance and just to essentially review our procedures for making sure we're monitoring properties through the building permit process to make certain they are complying with the flood plane ordinance. So, the ordinance that you have in your packet shows the additions in underline and the deletions and strikeouts. Again, I don't believe there's anything problematic or substantial in the handout that you have in your packets, but I'm certainly able to try to answer your questions if they have any, if you have any. The Commission will formally consider this at the October Planning Commission meeting as a public hearing and then hopefully a recommendation will be made to Council so we can cross this item off our list by the end of December, which is the timeline established by the Department of Ecology.
So did any members of the Commission have questions for staff? And then this item will show up on next month's agenda, correct?
Yes, we'll advertise and I doubt there'll be much community interest, but you never know. But we'll advertise and the Planning Commission will conduct the hearing on the code amendment and then it'll go through the normal Council workshop, Council meeting process.
All right, thank you. So the next item on our agenda... Oh. I'm sorry, Sid. Sure. I think Mr. White might have a copy, a printed copy for you as well. Okay. The next item on our agenda is code amendment, again, Waterfront Development District, Master File CA 2019-007. The applicant is the Port of Pasco.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. We've received a request to look at a proposed code amendment for the creation of a waterfront development district. The Port of Pasco is the applicant and Gary Balu, Economic Development Director, is here along with Ethan Spoo, a consultant, to speak and provide a presentation to the Planning Commission about the code amendment.
Thank you, Jacob. Thank you, members of Planning Commission, for having us tonight. Again, I'm Gary with the Port of Pasco. And we are here to talk about mixed-use zone, a draft zone, mixed-use zone that we're calling the Waterfront Code. Particularly, we'd like to see that applied at Osprey Point and it was written specifically for Osprey Point. And so folks know, Osprey Point is the Port of Pasco's waterfront development. It's where our main office is and it's at the intersection of Oregon Avenue and Ainsworth. But before jumping into the code, which I have the smart guy behind me who actually wrote the code to help me with that part, I want to kind of back up a little bit. Let's see. And talk about why we're looking at a mixed-use zone. And there's a number of different reasons. And, but one, it's something that we've heard from the community a lot. We, as folks know, folks know there's a regional economic development vision underway called My Try 2030. You know, it had, I think, 4,000 responses to the community survey. Pasco itself, the City of Pasco and Port of Pasco along with a number of other partners combined together to do a Greater Pasco Area, specific economic development vision called Somos Pasco. And we had about 2,000, I think we had about 1,200 responses to our community survey. And then as we were, the city and the port were going through a boat base and a marine terminal plan and we had a lot of citizen input on that and then as well as the 2009 Big Pasco Master Plan. But something that we heard a lot from folks was the desire to have engagement on the waterfront. The ability, and people usually put it like, "Well, I want to be able to go down to the waterfront and do something, you know, I want to be able to sit and have a glass of wine, I want to have a meal." And I mean, that means some level of development. We have a lot of trails on our waterfront. You know, we're the envy of many communities, but people would like to see more development and more activity. And we kind of show that way in ways other than just voice. But when you look at the Second Julia Heritage Trail, I think one of the busiest portions of that trail from walking is from Columbia Point Park to Howard Amon Park, which also is one of more developed areas of the waterfront. So we're hearing this a lot and mixed use, I think, provides an opportunity to make an engaging, lively area. But there's other reasons as well. In Pasco's comprehensive plan, it talks about mixed use. You know, it encourages walkable communities. And again, that's a mixed-use community, right? If you can walk from your house to your office to where you recreate and where you buy things. As well as encouraging high-density residential. And then creating a full range of housing options. And I think as we go through the code, you'll see we've tried to do that. And I just wanted to back up a little bit more on Big Pasco itself or on Osprey Point. So Osprey Point started out as part of Big Pasco. Big Pasco was acquired by the port in 1958 from the Department of the Army. And they had in this retention area, what we've labeled the retention area, they had a series of eight warehouses that they utilize originally to provide supplies to the Eastern Front during World War II. Anyway, port acquires that in 1958. But this area that you see kind of multicolored here in brown and red was an area that was undeveloped and it was right along the waterfront. The Army hadn't developed it, the port hadn't developed it. And as the port was putting together their 2008 master plan, the Commissioners at that time started looking at what should we really be using this for? Should we be expanding industrial in this area? And at that time, they had the Pasco Processing Center along Highway 395 and on rail and they were seeing a lot of good activity there. And they felt like Big Pasco was large enough for waterfront industrial. So they really started talking about this as an attraction area, as a way to bring businesses in. And the idea at the time was, it was mixed, a kind of mix of uses. Didn't include any housing, but it was office and commercial. So it was really kind of a suburban office park. And the port invested heavily in this concept and actually came through and did the first part of the development. So where you see the roundabout coming off Ainsworth Avenue to the south, that's been developed. As well as the port's main office is the, is one of the office buildings along that open space area and as well as developing the open space area. We did that about 10 years ago. And the office space itself, the port occupied the top floor and then we had a bottom floor. And for the first five years, that sent empty. Since then, we've been able to fill it and get that space utilized. But I think one of the things we saw was this whole plan has a lot of office space in it. And really, we're not seeing these suburban-style offices anymore. People are looking for, you know, a more engaged area, one where they can, where they can work and live in close proximity, similar to an urban area. And we're not trying to be an urban area here. I mean, we're still Eastern Washington. But my Commission started thinking, you know, residential should be an important component to a successful development down there. And that's where this concept of mixed use really came from. So, as we look at job creation centers, they're happening in mixed-use areas. If we think downtown, actually like Spokane right now. That's maybe a better example of Spokane is really in a boom right now. Now, Tri-Cities is doing well as well. But you're seeing a lot of activity in their downtown that they haven't seen before. And again, I think you're seeing that because of this mix of uses and that's a product, a lifestyle product people would like to have. So we think by pursuing the mixed use, we have this opportunity to do our primary role. Port is primarily an economic development organization and we want to create jobs. And we think through a mixed-use development, we have a better opportunity of doing that than through a suburban. We also think for Osprey Point, we have a better fit there as well because we have a residential community on one side of us and a heavy industrial center on the other. And so we started having this concept of bridging across those two and mixing the uses and then buffering along both sides. And I think that covers my part. And I would also encourage, if you have any questions along the way, feel free to ask and interrupt. I'm going to bring Ethan up now to take us through the rest of the presentation. Thanks.
There we go, turned off the microphone. Good evening, my name is Ethan Spoo and happy to be here tonight to talk to you about the Waterfront Development Code at the Port of Pasco's property. As Gary said, feel free to stop me and ask questions if you have any along the way. So Gary has talked to you a little bit about what the port and the cities and the region's vision is for waterfront development on the Columbia River. I wanted to give you, show you some pictures and describe for you what that looks like. So what you're seeing here in front of you on the screen is a multi-story development, mid-rise between two and six stories with living space above and then office space below. So these are what you may have heard of referred to before as live-work units. So with the trend in the economy now with more workers working at home, doing digital work online, telecommuting, this is something that they're looking for. They're looking for the ability to work at home. And this concept helps activate that, make it a reality, activate the street frontage during the day. But it's not just about live-work, it's also about live-play. I think Gary mentioned that, that's obviously another component of a complete community. And so in this, in this picture here, in this concept, what you're seeing are residential units above again, just like the last picture, but then on the ground floor, you're seeing businesses, restaurants and so forth, bars where people can recreate and socialize after hours, perhaps extend their work hours and meet some work colleagues afterward. This picture, you're seeing some of the same elements. This is really, there's in mixed-use developments and communities, there's really a focus on pedestrian orientation and providing that pedestrian experience. And so you typically see extra-wide sidewalks and landscaping. In this element, in this photograph here, or rendering here, what you're also seeing is waterfront development, so opportunities for people to access and interact with the waterfront. Usually narrower streets, that slows down the traffic a little bit and makes it a little bit more of a comfortable atmosphere for pedestrians. It doesn't have to be multi-story though, it can be a single-story. But you can still have that main street feel about it with wider sidewalks and pedestrian design, benches and so forth, textured sidewalks that really invite people to get out of their cars and walk around. You can even have national retailers in these contexts, which is something that you're seeing in this, in this photograph. On-street parking is pretty common in these types of situations and that kind of helps provide a barrier between pedestrians and the traffic on the street and lend to that pedestrian comfortable, comfortable pedestrian atmosphere. And then gathering spaces, places for people to mingle. They're sometimes called third places outside of work and home where people can socialize and gather and meet friends and so forth. And that can be an economic benefit as well because that sort of helps support the businesses in the area when you have those types of spaces. So just want to shift gears and talk to you and summarize for you what's in the draft Waterfront Development Code. And so the area that we're talking about again is Osprey Point, which is shown in red hatching there. So it's the area that's south of Ainsworth on the port's waterfront. The port offices are located here on Osprey Point Avenue. And so that's the area that the new code would apply to. And so if a new development came in and the city chose to adopt this code, then the city would be the review authority and have the final say on whether that development was approved under this, under this new code. And it would be implemented by the city's mixed residential, commercial, comprehensive plan designation. And I understand that that's, that this area right now is currently designated as industrial. It would be re-designated with the comprehensive plan update that you're going to be talking about later tonight. So there's some important principles that we want to talk to you about in terms of how the code was developed. Number one is flexibility. And that's the ability again to have a broad array of uses, residential, commercial, industrial, and relatively close proximity to each other, but also in a variety of different formats. And we showed you some of those formats, multi-story, sometimes single-story. And so with that, because we're talking about those types of uses in relatively close proximity to each other, compatibility is something that you want to be thinking about. And what we've done there, and Gary mentioned this as well, but what we've done to promote compatibility is to transition the uses across the site. So generally, the area east of Oregon, of the Oregon extension is designated for industrial uses, light industrial uses. And then as you move toward the center, we're talking about more high-density housing and commercial uses and then transitioning to lower-density housing, medium and lower-density housing on the west, abutting this single-family residential neighborhood. So you're getting not only internal compatibility by transitioning those uses, but you're getting external compatibility as well with the industrial uses to the east and the single-family residential neighborhood to the west. So one thing I just want to point out, the low density that I'm mentioning, those would be detached residences, more of sort of a cottage-style concept with some, with some common open spaces and gathering areas. So not traditionally what you think of as a single-family residences, but more of cottage and small-lot product. So the permitted uses sort of follow that vision. And so we're talking about commercial, office, education, and government uses and then low-intensity industrial or light industrial, as it's sometimes called. So we're not talking about smokestacks and loud manufacturing facilities. We're talking more about warehousing and distribution facilities, those types of things. And then artisan manufacturing, which we'll talk to you a little bit more about here in a second. Residential, as I said, would transition across the site. And so you have mix of products from duplex and triplex, multifamily and multi-story buildings, and then detached residences. And of course, to sort of have a complete computing, a complete community, you need to also have recreation and entertainment opportunities, so parks and then indoor and outdoor entertainment. We tried to have an eye toward that vision when we were talking about what types of conditional uses and prohibited uses there would be, things that wouldn't necessarily be completely compatible with that vision. So larger retail uses, gas stations, auto-oriented things, drive-through uses, but then also pawn shops, truck stops, heavy machinery, storage, junkyards and so forth that really just aren't very consistent with that vision in our opinion. The development standards also follow suit and help implement that vision. So we're talking about density of 14 dwelling units per net acre minimum. Just to give you an idea what that is, that's sort of like a townhouse product. And that's average across the residential areas within the waterfront development district. So there would be some areas that could have less density, those areas with detached housing or duplexes, but then some areas with higher density with that, as long as it met the average. And then the maximum density would be limited by the 60-foot building height, which is basically equivalent of about a five or six-story building. So mid-rise. Setbacks, you know, to facilitate that vision where you have somebody that can walk out of their place of business right onto the sidewalk or out of their, their house, right onto the sidewalk. We're talking about zero-foot setbacks for commercial uses and multifamily uses. And then for other types of residential uses, detached, detached and duplexes, you would have some setbacks in some yard areas there that would be required. Lot sizes would match up with those as well. And so commercial, industrial, and business park uses wouldn't have any minimum lot sizes. And that's pretty common in codes around the country these days. Parking, you would have parking that's been calibrated to this situation, which means that you want to have full utilization of the parking that you have there. You don't want to have large amounts of space dedicated to cars that goes unused a lot of the time. So we would be proposing to give credit to developers who, to use on-street public parking and public parking lots for their individual developments if that's located within walking distance, as well as a 10% reduction for bicycle parking. So lastly, I just wanted to talk about artisan manufacturing a little bit. So that's small-scale manufacturing that could be for woodworkers and bakers and brewers and that type of thing, something that would fit into sort of an arts district type of situation where you might have people strolling between businesses, but then also looking at what's going on in some of these artisan manufacturing spaces. And so you want to ensure that those are compatible with the surrounding residential and commercial uses. So we're talking small again, 10,000 square feet prohibiting outdoor storage, moving the loading docks to the back of the buildings away from residences. And then having a public viewing area where people can walk by, such as a window that they can look in and see what the artisan is doing in a commercial space where that artisan can sell what they're making. So it's also important to just acknowledge, and this has been written into the draft code, that the port does have design standards and agreements already in place that would in addition regulate some of the character of that area. So with that, I'll go ahead and take any questions. And if I can't answer the questions, maybe Gary can help me answer some of those. So with that, I'll go ahead and take any questions, and, uh, if I can't answer the questions, maybe Gary can help me answer some of those.
So I was just curious, uh, may- maybe it's more speculative. Have you looked at, one of the things that, you know, I love the idea, but one of the things that always occurs to you is. Move, when you increase densities and you create these great places for people to be, transporting people in and out of those areas. And this area isn't a high-transport area today, it's probably a lot industrial. And do you, have you looked at the impacts on what would be kinda, what would it trigger in terms of road and infrastructure improvements in the area? And, you know, again, maybe it's something to be studied or something that's speculative, I'm just curious if that's been thought about.
It's been thought of, yeah. It's been thought about, but it, we haven't done a traffic impact analysis specific to this. My my thought is, is we would have a developer come in and look to develop actual projects. That's when we would, uh, look at that and address it. The transportation infrastructure, and if you got, if I say something that's not right, you guys just hop in. Um, the traffic, you know, the the traffic infrastructure there, the the roads and everything are are, uh, uh, pretty large right now. So I, so, um, and I will, I will say, I used to be a civil engineer. So, um, I wouldn't expect a lot, but there could be some like, you know, and and maybe things like, uh, um, slow down lanes and things like that. And you may need some travels, traffic signalization as things go forward. Um, but the roads themselves, I think you have pretty good access going up, uh, Oregon to three ninety-five and and Ainsworth down to tenth.
The hi- the high number of tracks in the area, train tracks, does that impact it at all? I was noticing, it seems like there's lots of tracks. And, you know, the worst thing is you're coming home after a nice night out and you get stuck behind the trains kinda thing, so. I mean, just something to think about, I'm not sure, it's probably to be studied, right?
Yeah, and I, and as a guy who works there, so, um, really, you're the, since you have the over, Ainsworth overpass. Um, you you can always go out that way, um, and then, yeah, going up Oregon, uh, you see that line getting used every once in a while. But it's, it's not a main line, so you don't get the the kind of impact. So, eh, the other day at lunch, I was coming back from lunch, I had a one o'clock meeting, and and there was a train. So it happens sometimes, um, but the track infrastructure is pretty good. So the, so the trains, uh, move at a pretty decent clip. But, yeah, it could, it could impact, you could see that, yeah.
Uh, I just had a question about the, uh, uh, whether the market analysis shows that there's interest in, um, folks wanting to move there. Build residential, uh, or, um, commercial spaces, uh, or is this a situation where you build it, they will come? Or I know the market right now is pretty, um, they say hot in the, uh, lack of, uh, um, residence and. In commercial buildings and why not, but just wanted to know what kind of analysis you've done to demonstrate there's a need.
Sure, so there's a, there was a market analysis done, um, for the Marine Terminal, uh, as part of, and this was four years ago. So the Marine Terminal, um, so you have Osprey Point, you have the residential community, then you have the Marine Terminal and the Cable Bridge. And as part of, uh, the Marine Terminal is a cleanup site, uh, it's actually contaminated. And so we had some, uh, grant dollars from ecology. Uh, part of what we did was a market analysis, looking at what types of development would would go there. And and at that time of the market analysis, um, was really like, well, you know, maybe some multifamily there. Um, yeah, it kinda looked across the spectrum of the Tri-Cities and said, well, we don't think there's actually that much demand anywhere. And then we had a building boom, and all this stuff is full. Um, so, you know, uh, I think in part, you're gonna have this build it and they will come. You know, one of the things we don't have for this mixed-use development is we don't actually have that product in the Tri-Cities. Um, so it's really difficult, I shouldn't, it's limited. Um, so we really don't have something to point to and go, oh, wow, it was wildly successful there, so it should be successful here. Or or maybe we have some other factors to to take a look at. So, um, you know, part of this is looking at a, at a broader market across, uh, across the nation. Um, and and, uh, that we do feel in the Tri-Cities, like, if you're gonna do office or a really office-focused development. Um, you know, the the, you you probably need to be closer to the the core of the Tri-Cities. Um, which would be like maybe Road One Hundred area, but also across the way at Columbus Center Boulevard. Um, so here, we need, we need a draw in and of itself to bring not only residential but office. So it's trying to make that complete package there.
So I look at this as kind of a neat, neat thing, and like you said, we don't have anything to really base this off of. But, you know, with the survey results from the night, my try twenty thirty, it does kinda show that interest there. Where whereas I I look at the strip mall, Road One Hundred, I think that was a little before its time. And where this, I think, you're, you've, we had a survey, think about it, if the Road One Hundred, if you, you know, did a survey to the community then, would they have said, oh, yeah. Strip mall out of Road One Hundred's a good idea, and like, no, nothing's out there, nobody wants to go there, we might not have had it out there. Whereas now, we have, you know, some community engagement, and you have, you know, the community basically kind of asking for this as a whole. As opposed to, you know, just Pasco, so that, like, if it works, good luck. You know, so whatever, we tried, so, cool, appreciate it.
Okay, now it's my turn. Uh, so I was just curious, on this whole, uh, area, how many acres are we talking?
Yeah, fifty-five, fifty-eight.
Fifty-five, okay. And then, um, I know as you're drafting code, you always look to comparable cities. And I was wondering what other cities you looked at when you were coming up with your guidelines.
Yeah, so we looked at Kendall Yards in Spokane, um, the old Mill District in Bend. Uh, Central Edition in Boise, um.
From, from a code, code perspective.
Right, from a code perspective as well. Um, and then, uh, Hill, in the Hillsborough area, which is in Oregon, west of, west of Portland. We looked at a development out there as well, um, that has some special, um, standards to it that that are similar, uh, similar to those.
All right, thank you. Um, and I also wanted to know, I just looked in the, uh, you know, the draft guidelines for development standards. And I didn't see anything that, uh, addresses view corridors, um, and I know that's going to be an issue. People are going to get, um, passionate about being able to, even if they're not out there now. But being able to view, uh, the the waterfront. Um, so, um, I'm not, this is just a a comment that my guess is that's going to come up. And so you might wanna take that into consideration as you're going through your building, uh, standards. Um, and, uh, just, I wanted to close with two comments. Um, when we talked about, uh, we don't really have anything to compare it to here in the Tri-Cities as far as the mixed-use development stuff. I think back to when, uh, that grassroots, uh, effort for the farmer's market in Richland. And part of that whole development, uh, centered around that mixed-use concept. The businesses on the ground floor, residential up above, uh, maybe some office space mixed in there. And, um, I just thought the the, uh, support for that was great. And I think that, uh, as our demographic changes in our community, and we are having younger professionals in the area. Uh, that's something that they're looking for, um, you know, to be able to live on the third or fifth floor of a unit. You know, a mixed-use, uh, space, and then just go downstairs and get, go to their coffee shop or walk down the block. And go, uh, to a restaurant or something and not have to get in their car and drive for half an hour, you know, and then drive home. Um, and then the last thing I was gonna comment on is, um, I actually worked for a city that went through something very, very similar to this. Um, so, uh, it was a city that was dominated by the Navy. And, uh, the waterfront, when I moved there, was dilapidated old buildings that had been hotels, that had been converted to apartments. And degraded over time, there was a Navy lay-down yard, so it was just a acre of rusty metal parts. And, um, and that was right on the waterfront, I mean, it was prime waterfront. And they did a similar process and brought in, you know, beautiful condos. And they built a conference center and put in a park, a waterfront park. And now it's, uh, the heart of the city, I mean, it's beautiful and.
Talking Bremerton?
Bremerton, yeah.
Yeah, it's just there. Yeah, no, and it is, it's, it's really nice. And I remember as Bremerton was making those investments, sorry, probably need to do that, so John doesn't come at me. Um, Bremerton was making those investments first on the, uh, uh, was some of the highway, public transportation, or not public trans- but but highway. Actually moving, moving the highway, the ferry got off right there and and, uh, um, you know, people just kinda tear out of there. And and so they kinda had to slow, slow people out of there. And it was, it was a long, I mean, people look at it now and go, oh, like, that's great. But it was a long.
It was probably a ten-year process, and and you did have to convince those developers, this is worth it. But the condos are full and the, uh, all of the, uh, public spaces are used constantly. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, I think there's less convincing, uh, needed these days. And I I think Gary cited in the planning commission packet a figure that sixty-eight percent of millennials said that they wanna live in. Uh, a mixed-use development, is that right?
Mm-hmm, I agree, yeah. All right, any other questions for the, well, thank you, Mr. Baloo and Mr. Spoo, thank you so much. Okay, on to the next item. We have the, uh, under other business, uh, comprehensive plan update. Next month, we'll be having this at an, uh, a full meeting, uh, for the public hearing, so this is just a workshop.
Is there going to be a workshop before the, prior to the public meeting?
The publicly media, excuse me, the pub- public meeting is where you have an opportunity to comment.
I realize that, but will there be a, um, a workshop prior to the public meeting?
This is just this workshop.
Just this workshop? And I did have a question, and it was just kind of, um. It it went too quickly before I could ask, can I ask a couple of questions?
I believe the speaker should either submit those to us so we can get those to the planning commission or wait until the October public meeting. The third Thursday of the month.
Third Thursday of the month. Um, I was, and Mr. White spoke that there was a.
And the speaker should address the podium, Madam Chair.
If you could come up, that way we can get your comments on the record.
Sure. Uh, my name's Mary Mahoney, and maybe you could go back to this map? It went by too quickly, I didn't have a chance.
Ms. Mahoney, I'll be glad to try to answer your questions, uh, tomorrow, if if that's a good time for you.
Well, I'd like to put it on the record here.
Well, this is not a hearing, though. The workshop is is closed now, and the item is passed, so I will be glad to try to answer your questions tomorrow if that's a good time for you or my deal.
Okay, well, just real quickly, did you have a visit from the Department of Ecology over the summer, you stated? Could you tell me when when that was?
It was over the summer, I don't know the date, I can't remember it.
And could you tell me who the, who was the representative of the Department of Ecology?
Lynn Schmidt.
Lynn Schmidt? And you don't know when, and the other question that I have, I I think is of significance. Is, was there a report that was made by, um, the Department of Ecology via Lynn Schmidt?
Yes.
Um, could I have a copy of that?
Sure.
When?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, could you fax it to me?
Um, I'll email it to you.
Okay. Um, did it pertain only to the, um, insurance for the FEMA flood zone?
I'll be glad to email you her full report tomorrow.
Okay, well, I know there was some, uh, problems with the, uh, water quality in that area.
No, that was not addressed. What, the water quality of what?
The water quality of the flood.
Of the river?
Pardon me?
The water quality of what?
Of the flood zone area.
No, that was not addressed, nor was it considered.
I did receive an email from, uh, the city manager regarding the te- water testing.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with the flood plain?
Not pertain to that.
Nope.
Was not addressed.
Nope.
Okay.
Ms. Mahoney, uh, like we had stated earlier, this is just a workshop. Um, the public hearing on these items will be in October, and I know that staff is happy to answer your questions during their business hours.
I have submitted for the record many public disclosure requests. Um, pertaining to, um, the property. That is in, um, being addressed here, I live near here, so this is, um, my home. And I have not received, all I've received is a runaround, and I've asked for public disclosure requests. Um, RCW four-two-point-five-six for documents and materials.
Right.
And I have not received those documents and materials, and this is my home, and many other people home. And this is, um. I don't think I need to say anything more than it is my home and I'm not receiving the information, I'm getting brushed off continually.
Mr. White, is, will there be staff available for Ms. Mahoney to speak to tomorrow?
Uh, not about her public record request, that's a completely different subject. And actually, I think the material is waiting for her to pick up at the city clerk's office and has been for several months. Um, the, um, flood plain item, I'll be glad to discuss with her if she wishes to.
Is this in regard to building? On the, um, where there was going to be a fire department?
This is a citywide flood plain assessment by the Department of Ecology. It has nothing to do with site-specific properties.
Well, it's just.
Or water quality.
Or building, future building? Why don't I believe you? Okay. Carry on, continue.
Thank you. So, item six A, comprehensive plan update.
Uh, good evening again, members of the planning commission. Uh, in front of you, uh, we have two of the elements for the, uh, comprehensive plan. We have the housing element and the economic development element, as the, both are required through the Washington State Growth Management Act. To be elements of the comprehensive plan. And so we've, uh, these have obviously been a work in progress, so we just wanted to share these with you. And of course, are interested in any comments, questions, uh, that you may have on either of the two elements. You'll find some interesting data, um, that, uh, regarding housing type, which is kinda relevant to the discussion that was just held by the Port of Pasco. And also with the economic development section that, um, got a lot of guidance from regional, um, uh, plans. Specifically, this almost Pasco effort that was done a few years ago fed nicely into, uh, the economic development portion. So, uh, if you have any questions or comments, I'd love to hear them.
So, members of the commission, do you have any questions for Mr. Gonzalez?
Madam Chair, excuse me for interrupting, uh, the, thi- this is, uh, part of our effort to get this material out. Um, to hopefully to make your job of reviewing the comprehensive plan, what's fully assembled, to be a little bit easier. It it's gonna be quite a document, and, um, there's gonna be a lot of material. So hopefully, a little bit of extra time can be used to your advantage. And when this, uh, uh, comes up for, uh, your recommendation and, uh, to city council later this year. Actually, it might be a little more towards the first of the year, uh, you'll be, um, you won't feel, you won't feel as rushed.
And I appreciate that, I know that the comprehensive plan update is, eh, can be a very long process. And there's a lot of consideration that needs to be, uh, taken with each section of the comprehensive plan. And I would encourage, uh, commission members that if you have any questions or, excuse me, just looking for some clarity in any area. This is the best time to do it, as we're taking these sections in small bites, so to speak. Um, waiting until the very end, and then telling staff you don't agree with something is not recommended. So, uh, this is your opportunity to get those questions and concerns out, uh, on these two sections.
Can I ask a question about, uh, so these two sections on economic development housing, are these, um, giraffes? Of the replacement sections for the new plan? And, um, I think one of the things I think was helpful in the, in the big, thick one. Was to have like the, the red things in red that have changed or new. Um, did it, does, does, does that, uh, or is this just the final section as they're looking right now? Or or do you intend to kinda have, give us some help on, hey, we've changed these things or whatever? Maybe that's too much to ask, I just wondered if that's kinda.
No, I mean, we could definitely share the, uh, the versions that have had revisions and edits made to them. I just thought maybe for this, it, the cleaner version might be a little bit more appropriate, but I can definitely share that these aren't final, they're close to that. But I can definitely share that these aren't final, they're close to that in in their draft format as they exist today. But obviously, we'll take any comments into consideration um and make those revisions as necessary to both of these and the rest of the elements of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I think what, I mean, you don't have to send all of your markups and every, all, all of the red marks and and comments. But I was thinking, if we were to focus on sections that have changed or being updated, that would be helpful to kind of honing in uh on the big, because it is a big document.
Yeah, and and the economic development section is entirely new. I don't believe that was a part of the last one, the housing element has been quite revised as well.
Uh, it's good to hear then that the city is considering adding a new section that wasn't previously covered. Um, you can't have growth without really honing in on this section, I think, because this is the driver behind a lot of the other things, so, cool.
Uh, yeah, so I was happy to see that uh the projected needs analysis supports uh uh the numbers we heard before about the fifteen thousand new housing units needed to accommodate the population growth. Um, just perusing through, is there any um recommendations as to how we might accommodate those needs uh that?
I'm I'm sorry, the the housing needs?
Yes.
Well, um, it's good timing, Monday we'll have a presentation about housing, affordable housing uh for the city council. But uh the planning commission actually has has taken some action already uh through the spring and the summer in terms of uh providing some flexibility through code amendments. Um, the shared street frontages allows folks to subdivide their properties that without that amendment would have been impossible to do so. So there's an opportunity for some more housing there. Uh, recently, there was the slight increase in residential heights in uh higher-density uh zoning districts, which also alleviates that that constraint there. There was also a decrease of uh minimum frontage and lot sizes, uh that was probably in midsummer that went through and was approved by council, I believe, two weeks ago. So planning commission has actually already done some of those strategies. We're kind of working through implementing more of them. And and I'll add that the Tri-Cities Home Consortium right now is working on their five-year action plan. It will be adopted before our comprehensive plan. So we'll be able to take more of those regional strategies and place them where they are appropriate into our housing element to make sure that our, all of our plans are um bouncing and reflecting off of each other as they should be.
Any other comments from the commission, questions, concerns? I just wanted to uh thank staff and uh our consultants for all of the work that's going into the comprehensive plan update. Um, I know that the comprehensive plan is basically the city's roadmap for how we're supposed to grow. And uh I I have to say, I I was feeling very optimistic when I was uh finished reading this section. So thank you very much. And did we have any other items from staff that we need to discuss? So I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-four?
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we're adjourned, seven fifty-four, thank you.